Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before I ask for the roll call tonight, people might notice that a familiar face is not to my immediate left. Tonight, we have Mary Beth Breitinger, who will be taking over for Teresa Reardon. Teresa Reardon is our longtime city clerk, and she will be retiring at the end of the month. Had some vacation time to take and decided that tonight would be a good night to take for vacation. So, Mary Beth Breitinger is going to be filling in tonight for Teresa, but not the second meeting, as I understand it. So, but she will be here starting in August and going forward from there. So, with that, roll call, please, Mary Beth.
Nelson?
Here.
Orison? Larson?
Here.
Wunschel?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Reet?
Here.
Bulk?
Here.
Item three, tonight, we have an update on the Spencer Area Activity Center from Dr. Dan Jorgensen.
Well, thanks for having us. For those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Dan Jorgensen. I've lived here since July of 1983, also worked here since July of 1983. And until recently, that's pretty much all I did was one job, went to work. And I got involved this spring in trying to save the Spencer Area Activity Center, and now I'm the president of the board, so I've got another responsibility. And we've got a nice group of people on the board, people who are energetic, fired up, and we've had one breakfast already, and it seems like we had the most people we ever have attend. We also took in the most money we've ever had from a breakfast. So, it seems like the community is interested in supporting this. I think that COVID played a big role in what happened the last two years, and I hope that's the only reason. So, in the past, they've received money from the city council and from the county board of supervisors, and the city of Spencer was not asked this year because the intent was to close. And so, I'm here hoping that that money will move forward into our coffers. We've got several other things going on. We have a fundraiser that will be July 16th, Saturday night of July 16th, and we're going to have Glenn Hendrickson performing. And we're going to serve up a bunch of spaghetti from, just a little bit of advertising here, from my son's business down there by the bucket. We're going to try to get that accomplished. So, has anybody got any questions about what we're doing?
Well, Dr. Jorgensen, I'd just like to thank you and the people who stepped forward to put the senior center back on track. And through no fault, I think, as you alluded to with the other board, the other board ran into some roadblocks and were willing to say, basically, to you folks, well, you folks, we'll hand the reins over to a new board and see what can happen. And hopefully, good things will continue to happen at the senior center.
Well, we're sure hoping so. And I, you know, alluding to the problem, when these guys decided to close it, we were all still wearing masks, you know? It didn't look like it was going to change. Two years of that got pretty old. So, the mask are off, and we're trying to move forward. So, thank you, and we'll take up any more of your time.
Well, and I bet you have tickets for sale for that fundraiser.
We got them all sold.
All right.
We got them all sold.
Okay. That's even better.
That is better. Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, Mr. Jorgensen, what funding are you asking, basically, what we have assigned previous years? And to use that funding, it's just going to be for, to get things back up and run into a proper process there?
Right. You know, we've got day-to-day expenses, of course, you know, and we've always received support from the city and the board of supervisors. And that just about takes care of what our needs are to keep the doors open. But to get a new director, it's going to cost some money, and that's what some of this fundraising is for. And we'll continue to do that so that, you know, you always hope that one time it'll be self-sustained. You can just take care of it. But we want to have the entire community interested in coming there. We're trying to dress the place up a little bit and make it a place where, a venue where you could have maybe a graduation party or even a wedding reception. And if we can rent the place out for that, that's going to help fill the coffers for us. So, we're trying some different stuff, and hopefully, we'll re-energize it.
And I've always thought it's a good cause. I mean, our seniors need a place to go. Problem was, and you're saying it exactly, COVID shut them down, and a lot of people were afraid to even leave their houses, let alone go socialize with people. So, I'm happy to hear that you're having a better turnout right now, and maybe it took this to get people awake and understand that it can leave, you know, everybody. So, I appreciate your time and effort in it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Item four is the consent agenda. A is a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of June 20, 2022. B licenses, we have no licenses to approve tonight. C is a resolution authorizing permanent transfer of funds of budgeted transfers for the month ending June 30, 2022. Item D is a resolution to provide for a notice of hearing on proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for 2022 25th Street Southwest and 11th Avenue Southwest sewer extension project and the taking of bids there for. The letting date is 7/28/22, hearing and potential award of contract, August 1, 2022. E is a resolution acknowledging receipt of fiscal year 2022 budget amendment for Spencer Municipal Hospital. F is a resolution relating to the financing of proposed projects to be undertaken by Spencer Municipal Hospital, establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. And G is a motion to approve community benefit services agreements with Upper Des Moines Opportunity, Regional Transit Rides, Northwest Iowa RSVP, Spencer Economic Development Corporation, Arts on Grand, Spencer Activity Center, and Spencer Community Theater. Sarah Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Donovan.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Aye.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. And Reet, aye.
Under item five, old business. A is an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter II, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code to adopt a definition of dwelling triplex and amending Title IX, Chapter III, Section 1, subsection A of the Spencer City Code to allow dwelling triplex as a permitted use in the A Residential Zoning District. This is the final filing. Motion made by Tom.
I'll second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment and thank Alec and his team and the Planning and Zoning Department. I think this is another example of some small changes that, if you're not paying attention, don't seem to mean a lot, but this is going to open up some, hopefully, some great opportunities for people to develop some areas of our community and get some housing going for us that we need. So, thanks for that effort.
Anyone else? I would echo those sentiments by Councilman Bulk and mention, basically, those same things that the mayor's update last week. So, no other comments? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. Reet?
Can we lose you, Lauren?
Anybody there, Lauren? I think we lost the connection. The motion passes. Okay. Item B under old business is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 1, Section 1 of the Spencer City Code concerning construction permits. This is the second filing. Motion made by Tracy.
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. Any discussion? Please vote by machine.
Aye.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. Reet?
I think he said aye.
He said aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman Reet, and I don't know if you heard Councilman Nelson's comment. You probably don't want to. Okay. Item six, under new business. Item A is an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7 of the Spencer City Code to adopt a new Title I, Chapter 7, Article F concerning the deputy city clerk and making technical revisions to permit one individual to serve as deputy city manager, finance officer, and city clerk. This is the first filing. Okay, Tom. Donovan with the second. Any discussion?
One question.
Yeah.
You entered that, Deuce, over here, that she was acting, but we have to pass this amendment first before she can be acting, right?
She's a substitute tonight.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Okay. Okay. All right. Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. Reet?
Are you with us, Lauren?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Item B under new business is a resolution in support of a workforce housing credit, tax credit benefit application to be submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by Eagle Construction for a housing project at 809th Street Southwest.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian. Second by Donovan. Any discussion?
Dan, could you upgrade us on what this project would involve and what our reasoning is behind support in this?
So, this is a Windcrest Phase 3, 52 townhouse units. So, they're going to be rent, townhouse rental units, just like Windcrest 2. This is, they're applying for workforce housing tax credit. And in order for the developer to be awarded that grant, the city has to do a resolution of support and also support financially up to $1,000 per dwelling unit. Our tax, our 100% tax abatement for multifamily housing will way more than cover that $52,000, and so, that's what's going in the application, so it's a pretty good chance. It's going to be a pretty strong application. So, hopefully, we can get, they're awarded this, and they can get going on that next phase because we certainly need 52 housing units.
Any other discussion or questions for Dan? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. Reet?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item C under new business is a motion to approve an agreement with I&amp;S Group, ISG, for the city of Spencer Municipal Facilities Condition and Needs Assessment for not to exceed $49,930. Motion made by Brian. Second by Tracy. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Item D under new business is a motion to approve an agreement for stand-up electric scooter services with Bird Rides Incorporated.
I'll make a motion on that.
Motion made by Ron. Second by Tracy. And any discussion on this?
Dan, have they finalized where they would put these right now, or are we still up in the air on that?
No, they would experiment at first, so they're going to guess where they think people will be going from and to and do it there and see what sort of service they, ridership they get, and then move them around accordingly.
Is this an agreement we have to each year or is it an ongoing one?
It's an ongoing one, but it's cancelable at any time.
Right.
So, if we run into trouble and we think it's more trouble than it's worth, we can cancel it at any time.
So, does that include if there's a chronic issue with them being left where people can trip and, you know, just everywhere?
For any reason whatsoever.
Okay. Did we get anywhere with the geofencing?
I've been told they can do it. Well, like I said, we can cancel this if they decide they can't do it, but I've been told that they can, and I know other cities have done it. I know when I talked to the city of Atumwa, they have a fairly, well, it's not fairly new anymore, but a convention center, a meeting center, and they had trouble with a couple of kids rode them inside the convention center and did burnouts on the carpet. And they geofenced the inside of that now, so they can't get them inside the convention center anymore. So, they can do it.
Actually, I look forward to this. I think it would be nice to have and good for the city. I just, you know, there would be some bumps, there's no question.
Yeah, and that's what I said in my memo. Every city I talked to said the first year, there is a few bumps, but it smoothed out, and it all depends on the local agent that they decide to hire. And I think if we don't like, if we're not getting the service we need, we can ask them to try to find somebody else, or we can cancel the contract.
Well, they sound like they're pretty easy to get along with and work with, so.
According to the cities I talked to, yeah, they haven't had really any too much trouble.
And my understanding of this is that they are treated the same as bicycles, and, but, that you have to be 18 in order to operate one. Is that correct?
That's correct, although that was one of the problems that a lot of the cities have been having is they get, they have ones to get around that. Now, a couple of them just said, you know, if the parents are letting them do it with their credit card, then they have some responsibility. The anecdote I liked the best is in Atumwa. I guess the city manager's child took his credit card and ran up a huge bill, underage riding of bird scooters, so it can't happen. And no one had, nobody said they were wanting to get rid of them. Even the Oskaloosa, I think, was the most negative. And the police chief said, you know, we have had some trouble, and it's a pain in our butt, but we think the mobility is worth it, and nobody on the council or nobody on staff is trying to get rid of them at this point.
Okay.
So, that being said, as the city manager, would we have you put your credit card online so the first 100 people could get a free ride?
Free rides, yeah. Yeah.
Warby, I assume you've been in on this discussion. You're okay?
Good point. Good point. Okay. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The motion carries. Thank you, Lauren. Item E under new business is an ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 8 of the Spencer City Code by adopting provisions regulating the operation of electric stand-up scooters. This is the first filing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Donovan. Second by Tom. Any discussion?
Don, I wonder, would it be advantageous to add any language about, I mean, specifically, we already have, you know, the ordinance is for Grand Avenue. I appreciate that, but adding Grand Avenue as excluded to this ordinance, would that assist in any way?
Well, that's certainly something you can consider. You had mentioned or questioned whether there was a specific speed limit, and I think I should include that in the next draft that you see. If you want to exclude them on Grand Avenue, of course, that's a council decision. I, we haven't gotten direction one way or another yet on that.
It seems like that's the direction that I've heard that the council would like to go, but I don't think there's been any specific request with regard to that.
I guess my concern, I don't want them to go on the sidewalks on Grand Avenue, but I would like to see them be able to ride on the streets and.
And that was the problem with the geo-fencing that I believe we were talking, because honestly, I believe that Grand Avenue is going to be a place where they're going to want to drive them, you know? I think it's like the bicycle ordinance. I think we'll have to have the enforcement, and I think that kind of, that may fall, you know, we have ordinance on the bicycles, so that may fall on the police department on that, on that part of it.
Can they go down Grand? Yeah. They can go on the highway.
Yep, their vehicle.
Yep. Well, you know, I, my biggest concern is, I mean, I get people all the time that walk out my door, including myself, and just to get, just about get wiped out by bikes. And so, I hate to see this, you know, it's going to be the same thing. They're going to be on the sidewalks, and it's going to be work for the police, but I don't, if you can't keep them off the highway, then.
But it can be geofenced, correct?
Not on the side, it sounded like they.
Not just, not just the sidewalk.
Not just the sidewalk, but Grand Avenue, would that include?
From building to building.
Building to building, right.
And the problem I see with that is, there may be some businesses that want the people riding scooters to stop and visit and spend money. I know that was mentioned, that's already kind of a case with bicycles with some of the businesses. Welcome bicycles and others don't, so I don't.
I agree. It's a slippery slope.
I don't know whether we want to hard code that in the code in case we get a bunch of businesses that want it at some point, or we just take it as, I mean, the scooters say no riding on sidewalks and stickers all over them, and there's, you know, I've been told that it happens, and it calms down a little bit after the first year as people get used to it, but.
Yeah, I don't think you want to block them completely out of, out of Grand Avenue.
Yeah.
But, boy, I.
Yeah. Yeah, Lauren.
Just a quick question, perhaps, and this relates to Tom's concern. And maybe this goes to Dan, because he's been working with these folks. Could they come up and actually do a test? In other words, bring a couple of these up, bring a couple of these up and have them, and have them run on their sidewalks and show us how the geofencing works?
I suppose they could do that after they get set up, but I imagine that's going to take some technology, computer work, and they probably aren't going to want to do that. Maybe they would. I could ask. I can ask. I don't know exactly how that would work, but I know if we want it geofenced, it can be geofenced.
Well, we can.
I think that would go a long ways, I think that'd go a long ways to help with Tom's concerns and others that want to just see how effective that geofencing is. And I don't, if it could be done, it'd be great. I would think they would have a way to do it in that, but just thought I'd bring it up.
Yep. Good point, Lauren. This is only the first filing, and we have to have two more readings with regard to this. So, we certainly have time to consider the geofencing on Grand Avenue. We certainly have time to consider what you've brought up as well.
Well, one comment. I mean, we just approved the agreement for the stand-up electric scooters.
Right.
Is that a first filing, too? Because that's usually a one and done when we're just doing an agreement. So, we approved it, but now we're just doing the first filing of an ordinance. So, when do they want to come into Spencer? What are they looking?
As soon as they can. It's, they run only in the summer season, so obviously.
But they're yet this year. They want to still, they're still pushing them in.
They would like to do it tomorrow, as far as I know. I mean, they're kind of antsy to get here because, you know, summer's going fast.
But they still have to hire a local person to run this operation, correct? Unless they have somebody lined up already.
They have regional ones, but I know they get local ones as well, so I don't.
Okay.
I guess my stance is, you know, when you approve, having them come here, I guess, we approve and try it and see how it goes. I mean, I don't think anyone's dead set against it. So, if we keep pushing it off, and all of a sudden, they're going to say, you know, heck with you guys.
Right.
And then they're going to figure out, Okoboji would be a better place.
And what I, well, it might be a secondary place, but I think what you're, what you're trying to say is that we waive maybe a couple of the readings so they can get coming in. We don't like to do that, but.
I don't think we need to waive the rate.
Well, be August before this is done, then. That's what I'm saying. It's going to be August.
As soon as, as soon as they have the agreement, they can.
Okay, so.
The ordinance is the city's side.
Okay, so they can, once they have the agreement, that won't stop them from coming.
As of the last vote, they can come now.
All right. Yep, that's good, then.
So, I want to, I want to, I want to know who's going to be on the scooter testing it and when they hit the geofence, goes over the handlebars.
You're used to a scooter.
Man Donovan.
Not me. You've been on a scooter quite a bit, Tom.
Yeah, not the same kind.
Okay. Any other discussion? Please vote by machine.
Nelson, aye. Larson, aye. Wunschel, aye. Hanson, aye. Bulk, aye. Reet?
Aye.
Okay, item seven, department head reports. First, Planning Department, Alec.
into town, both residential, commercial, and some future development site plan discussions, which is always fantastic to see. Staff has been surveying the east side of town for trees, so that new that first notice should be coming out here in the next couple of weeks for tree trimming. Then we'll get the following notices after re-inspections. Other things, we've been staying on top of grass, so thank you, community, for keeping grass trimmed up this year. It's been been going very smoothly for everyone. Very few have been cut by any city contractor. Other than that, I'll keep it brief, we've been staying on top of other communications with developers and housing folks, so hopefully we can come forward with some of those projects, but as of right now, we're just pursuing all of our leads that come our way. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Alec, we have a planning and zoning meeting coming up next week.
We do.
Where I believe there's a public hearing.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. Next week, the thirteenth, that public hearing will be for the urban chicken ordinance. So public comment will be able to be heard at that time at the planning and zoning level, and any input is greatly appreciated. Also, at that meeting, we will discuss the urban renewal plan recommendation as well.
So just just, excuse me, just to reiterate that, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is at eight o'clock Wednesday.
Yep.
July thirteenth.
Correct.
Eight o'clock here in the council chambers.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Alec. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Library.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The library is, we're halfway through summer reading program, everything's nice and busy and busting bustling around at the library, so that's good to see. One fix, we had to have a fan motor replaced for the air conditioning in the south addition to the library where the ICN room is. There's a fiber optic room that stores a bunch of technology that I don't understand. That was getting really, really hot, so I was glad that Hanson's was able to come and fix that for us. Our board meeting is next Thursday, July fourteenth, at five thirty in our ICN room, which will be nice and cool, of course. We are planning on closing on Friday, July twenty-second, for staff workday, and we're actually going to be moving a few shelves and some collections around to try and kind of get things better organized and feature some collections that are currently hiding, so that'll be a big project, but we've got a plan, so. I went out last week and I kind of assessed all of the little free libraries around town, they've been neglected a bit, so we're going to see about making some repairs to those, and I did fill them with some fresh books, so we're going to be paying more attention to those again. And so the community can, of course, go out and check on any of those if they're looking for a book and the library's closed, or they just happen to be at the park. We are asking this month if anybody has a collection or anything they'd like to show off in our display case. We're looking for some adult show and tell time, not that came out, not great, I'm sorry. But, okay, show and tell like we had in as kids, but, you know, so if you have a collection, last August, I had a ceramic dog collection that I inherited from my mother and added to as a child, and so we we did that for Dog Days of Summer, and so anything like that, unique, something you want to show off, can get ahold of us and we'll let you display it for a whole month. Next week is kind of a big week for summer reading programs. There's a book swap party on Monday night at six thirty. Let's bring a book, take a book, just don't expect to get it back, but and then Robin Nell's also planning a fun, like, recycled book craft for people to do while they're there. Friday, July twenty, July fifteenth, excuse me, at ten P M., we will be out at Onyota Park with Sanford Planetarium staff, looking through telescopes at the night sky. And, yeah, kids' water fights with the Spencer Fire Department will be July twenty-eighth at two, so, you know, all sorts of stuff going on. Any questions?
And do you have a dunk tank for Chief Kanyan?
Not this year, maybe we'll get one next next year, and he's he's busy.
Yeah. Okay, any questions?
Not a question, but a thank you. Excellent work with the summer reading program.
Thanks.
All three of my children are eating it up, so once again, they're great job by you and your team, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Chief Kanyan is not here, this is Chief Warburton approaching the mic.
Good evening. The month of June had the police department responding to one thousand three hundred and thirty-five calls for service, and we performed forty-six arrests. We had several meetings this month, meetings regarding the homeless population and how it relates to services hosted by the Clay County General Relief, I was attended, attended a certified community behavioral health clinic, which is Mobile Crisis from the Seasons Center, as well as we attended the Iowa Great Lakes Executive Drug Task Force meeting held this month. The police department, insurance office, emergency management, Spencer Fire, all met early this early this month to do an active shooter tabletop. Now, this was all scheduled long before the latest shootings, but definitely fits into the to what's going on right now in current events, but tabletop was held with a scenario and a drill anticipated in August before school starts, so it'll be at the high school is what it's planned for right now. ATV, the police department got our new ATV up and running on the city trail system, which adds a level of police presence out there. It's been well received by the public as well as the officers outriding it, so. Lastly, the PD parking lot is now open, so it's open to the general public. And one thing I guess I forgot to mention, the new ATV house file that went into effect, and so I got a lot of questions coming into the police department whether or not they could use the Grand Avenue Bridge, and we cannot, it does not meet the requirements. Now, because it says two-lane primary highway that was added to that bill. I do have a call into Megan Jones, and she has contacted the Department of Transportation and tried to get a definition of two-lane primary highway as it relates to our Grand Avenue Bridge and this bill, so we're waiting to hear from that. So hope is not out of the woods yet, but we can only hope that that would make sense, so for for the citizens of Spencer. So and we the ATV rules and the riders have all been doing a very good job policing that. We've had no issues as of date, so. Any questions for me?
Chief, have you thought about a program for the ATV on the trails like Dixon County does, where you can train volunteers to?
Yeah, we have thought about that. Right now, currently, we have during the summertime, we actually have an extra officer because our school resource officer falls into place back in the general patrol, and so we're utilizing him in that resource right now, so we actually have a certified officer out there, which I think adds to the level of law enforcement that are out there, so.
Okay, any other questions?
Chief, I know the Fourth of July was was just yesterday, and I did get a call tonight on on the fireworks, and on it, and it's hard for these pet owners, it was a pet owner that it really, you know, breaks your heart that they that they have to go through this trauma and stuff, but I seen you had, what, thirteen hundred and forty-six calls, and you probably would have had that many that night on top of that, right?
You're right. One only has to look out there, you know, sit outside for just a minute to realize there was a lot of people shooting off. We're we're facing an uphill battle here. I mean, when we're allowing the sale of fireworks here, again, my officers responded to several different people, and we've gone out to the houses, and they're all, they didn't know of the ordinance, they didn't know of the city ordinance and that, despite the KICD interview that we've done and and the numerous things we've talked about here at the council meeting, so it's hard to get the word out, and it's 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 hard, it's difficult. My my animal's the same way, does not like the fireworks at all, and and I'm just glad that the fourth is over.
State kind of put us in a bind there on on, you know, when they're selling it wherever, and it just, you know, and then tell people that they can't shoot them when when they're taking the revenue from it, it's it's kind of difficult, but.
It is very difficult.
And I know, and I talked to you earlier, the fines on that are are really steep on that.
Several hundred dollars.
You know, and and it's pretty hard to give somebody a three, four hundred dollar fine on, you know, I I know being naive of the rules doesn't doesn't make innocent, but, you know.
It makes it difficult for officers, no doubt. I mean, there's discretion there that the officers use, and they look at that three hundred and fifty bucks, and then usually, you know, when we're talking to these people, they've been well received, they all, you know, as soon as we talk to them, they put the stuff away and it's done. It's the people that, you know, that shoot off these large fireworks and then run them back inside the house, and now the officers aren't there to see them, and it's just, it's it's a tax on on emergency services all the way around.
All right, thank you for your information.
Yep, any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Public Works, Mark.
Good evening. Last week, we sprayed mosquitoes for the first time, believe it or not, in two years. Last year, through the drought cycle, we didn't have the the equipment out, so we do have that that information and alerts posted on Facebook, our website, along with emailing it to the radio station, and they get it out as well. So if you want to see a safety data sheet on the material that we use, it's on the city website, we're going to try to improve that a little bit and define which side of town that we were going to spray on, on which night. With the new equipment we had, we cover ground a little bit faster than we did in the past, so we were kind of getting getting our feet on the ground a little bit and acclimated with a little different system, but it did work well and regulated and sprayed accurately. We're disposing of some equipment, it'll be on the Big Iron Online Auction Service, nineteen ninety-seven street sweeper and the older Ford fire truck as well, both are listed, cleaned up, and we'll be going through that process. We received are are in the process of receiving requests for proposals on the land or the building site at the landfill. That was the recent purchase, we'll keep you informed on that. We had a couple employees go out to Peoria, Illinois, and inspect a used piece of equipment. If you do recall, in the capital improvement plan, we have some used dirtwork equipment that we'll purchase at the landfill for D and R change and requirements regarding cover over there, so we'll be making a recommendation. Sent a couple employees, actually, it was a total of three, Public Works employees, went to Ames for ADA training on the ADA truncated domes and sidewalk approaches for a refresher on that. Also, we had, oh, monthly safety meeting along with, I think it was trenching and shoring, and trailer safety towing as well, so we're always pushing the safety meetings. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks. Park and Recreation, Jared.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple project updates here. West Leach MLS was down doing the working on the boat ramp here today, they got really close. Ross probably touched a little bit more on it, but we'll see what this rain amount does, probably jump the river back up, and and so we'll see how that that pans out there. They're they're really close to being done, so we'll see how it goes. The Rocket Slide, Midstates is also prepping the sidewalks for concrete, and then the subbase prep for the safety surfacing on that as well. So once they get kind of all that concrete work and and we get that safety surfacing in, we're going to go through as staff to do kind of another safety audit on the whole thing, make sure it's safe and and usable, because we don't want to get anybody hurt. So I know everybody's kind of excited to have that thing up and and usable, but bear with us, we want to make sure that's safe for for everyone to use, so just bear with us here and we'll we'll get her completed. Fairview Tennis Court, talking with Jim a little bit, and we'll probably set a hearing or a bid letting date at the next meeting. He's working with several contractors and speaking with them, so we're trying to finalize a a letting date for that and rebid that project out. Another thing we did here last week on Friday was at Earl Page Park, we took down the playground equipment, it was considered a safety hazard and a liability for us, that that equipment is fairly old and and extremely unsafe, and so if you receive phone calls or anything on on that, we did take that equipment down. We're going to maintain that as green space for the time being until we can finalize future plans for that park. There is new playground equipment and not far from that site, so the plan is to redevelop that into a quieter area, space, public space for people to use, so work on that. Programs here, you know, we had several programs we were willing to try, sign-ups for programs in general, speaking with the Y have been down from years past, I think there's just been quite a few, too many options for people to choose from, and and so people have to pick and choose certain things, so, but we did have enough teams sign up for pickleball leagues, and we will start that down at River View Park here this week. We've added concrete bag set to East Leach Park for anyone to use, and so another activity for people to u utilize while they're there. And then I also wanted to recognize G W Pete House Sanitation, they also made a donation of five hundred dollars towards the Stolly Trail, and we appreciate their support on that. And then finally, recognize Ed Lawver as our cemetery technician who started last week and has been doing a really nice job, so we'd like to welcome him to the department.
Any questions?
Jared, what's the caution tape out at the Miracle Playground?
So that we put security fencing around the work site, the site prep, and we actually had to take the swing sets down because the swings were hitting the actual fence, and so it created a safety hazard, so we just removed them, so nobody could utilize them until we're done with that project and we'll get those put up, so.
The tennis courts bids, are those the reinforced?
Yeah, so the plan was, yeah, after our discussion with the Parks, Rec and Culture Committee is to rebid that as doing post-tension concrete and.
And then Jared, can you?
Hey Jared, I got one question for it.
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Back to the Rocket Slide, I had some people ask how much we ultimately, what the private donation dollar amount was raised for that Rocket Slide, did you ever come up with a final number on that?
Uh, yeah, just just over sixty-two thousand, I believe, so.
One six?
Two six, or six two, sorry.
Six two. Perfect, thank you.
Yep. Brian, you had a question?
I did, thank you. Could you provide an update on the aquatic center?
Yeah.
Water and sewer issue?
Sure, so we're we haven't received the June bill, so full billing cycle, we've received the one right as we were filling it, and so we found a few discrepancies there, and so we want to make sure we go through a few billing cycles to really figure out what's going on. So we should have that bill here in the next day or two, and it'll get you a better answer there, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jared.
Yep, thank you.
Golf Course, Brian.
Golf Course has been very busy the last month and all the way into July, even with all the heat that we've had. Our main focus, other than just day-to-day maintenance activities and clubhouse staffing, has been our weed control and then irrigation, it's probably been our two biggest things that we're dealing with. So far, a hundred and twenty-six acres of the golf course has been sprayed for clover and broadleaf weeds, there's still about forty acres left. Later this week, I will be spraying fairways and teas for with an insecticide for grub control, which we spray every year in the early part of July, which eliminates the the formation of the small grubs that show up in early August, which when we don't spray, then the the skunks and the and the raccoons have a feast and can tear a lot of turf up in a short period of time, so that will be completed this week, and then I hope to have the rest of the the clover sprayed this week as well. The other areas, our irrigation system, we've had some some problems with some of the green stations, which has left some localized dry spots in some of these areas, so we've been doing a lot of hand watering at night, early in the morning, throwing wetting agents in with that, too, trying to just maintain it so it doesn't get any worse. Trying to just, uh, maintain it so it doesn't get any worse. Um, all the areas have improved quite a bit. Um, but we're still kinda dealing with a lot of those issues, um, here and there. The biggest concern that I've had, thankfully for this rain again for the second day, has been, um, our irrigation pond. So, the, the well has been having a very difficult time trying to keep up pumping as much water into the pond as we're pumping out of it each night. And it's just not possible to, to keep up with it. So, prior to this last couple rains, I was trying to limit the amount of water that we were putting down on, on our fairways at this time. We're limited with, uh, the Iowa DNR as to how much irrigation we can put down through a golf season. And we're also limited by how much mu- uh, water we can pump out of our well. So, as I expressed this morning at the department meeting, if I had to run my well for the entire month, it would take up forty-six percent of the water that I'm allowed to use during the golf season with the DNR. So, it's just something that we have to, to pay attention to as we're moving forward. Um, we're losing a lot of, of water just through evaporation with the high temperatures that we're dealing with every day. So, the rain's definitely and extremely helpful, welcome to, I'm sure, a lot more people than just myself. But, uh, otherwise, we're busy pretty much every day, except for this evening, we're closed. And that's all I've got, unless there's questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
City Attorney's Report, Don.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Activity in June was, uh, actually down a little bit from the prior month, but, uh, I would, I guess I would say fairly typical. No particular, uh, large items, but many, many different ones. I'll mention a couple of things. We, the city did get sued in, uh, late June by a former, uh, East, East Leach Park Campground Manager, um, who had contended earlier that, um, our maintenance had damaged her camper. And that claim was considered and denied. Um, so she elected to file a small claim. Has been turned over to our insurance, uh, uh, company who hired an attorney from, uh, Storm Lake to handle that. So that'll be taken care of in that fashion. Um, we're scheduled to close on the city's purchase of the Three Pines property on North Highway Boulevard tomorrow, assuming you approve that claim in a few minutes. Otherwise, are there any questions?
Questions for Don? Thanks, Don. And I see Chief Canyon has come back to the meeting. So we'll hear from him. Great timing.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager.
Members, your Spencer Fire Department responded to sixty-plus calls last month. Uh, thirty-three of them being with EMS, uh, featuring falls, difficulty breathing, uh, chest pains, uh, overdoses, and, uh, some stroke victims. Our, from a fire side of the house, we had thirteen runs with fluid leaks, false alarms, faulty alarm systems, a couple of mutual aids with our neighbors, and, uh, electrical fire in a basement. Our city ambulance ran four calls with, uh, various fall victims, chest pains, as well as fainting. Our special duty, when we do this, it is a true honor representing not only the city, firefighters as well. Uh, we had an opportunity to, uh, uh, act for the Clay County races as far as fire and rescue protection. Greater than that is to escort our Special Olympians returning back to our town. And, uh, they truly enjoyed that very much. Standing at the ready, uh, supporting all the rest of our city entities for Flag Fest, as well as escorting the baseball team out of town. Some of our trainings, uh, our brand-new engine has arrived. And we started acclimating the firefighters to, uh, a few basic operations. And we're gonna continue to hone their skills with the new rig. Uh, we finished up our hose testing. The hospital, uh, we took a tour of the hospital where they have a couple of new hyperbaric chambers. They're located on the third floor. Now, a hyperbaric chamber, as we know, we don't have a lot of scuba diving accidents, but we also look at it, what else is it used for? For wound, wound debridement, as well as other health, health needs. Uh, it was very interesting for the crews to understand, uh, the suppression needs for it, as well as the location within the hospital. Our EMS training this, uh, month featured, uh, triage. What would you do if? And, uh, that sort of rounds out what your fire department has done this month. Any questions? Appreciate it, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Chief. Engineers Report, Ross.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, a few updates, uh, like as Jared talked about a little bit at the West Leach Park Boat Ramp Replacement Project. Um, MLS was on-site today. They did start grading, uh, the ramp itself. Uh, they did get most of the granular subbase in. Um, they've got a little touch-up work to do, but the rain at four-thirty today, uh, kinda brought everything to an end for today. Um, hopefully the river doesn't go up too much and they should be able to continue work. So, uh, the next step down there will be to, um, pour the push-in slab. And once that's got cure time, they'll push the slab into the river. And then they'll pour, uh, a second slab on top of that to extend it out to where we want it to be at the top of the ramp, so. Um, on Fourth Street, uh, the Fourth Street Overlay Project, uh, pillar construction was in town last week. Um, and they, uh, they got quite a bit done on that project, curb and gutter and sidewalk work. They really need about two good days of concrete work yet on that project to complete the work. Um, so things are, uh, I would say substantially better progress than last fall, which is a good change. The chief touched on the PD Parking Lot a little bit. Um, it is open. Um, we've been, we've been working with S M U a little bit to get the sprinkler system reestablished in there. Um, so there is a little backfill work to do and then, uh, some, some, um, work to do on the green space also, south of the, the new parking lot. Um, they were working on that today and I don't think they got done with the rain, so. The only other thing I had was at the, the Airport Terminal Rehab Project. Um, the contractor out there, uh, last week replaced the rotten underlayment, um, under the siding. And they're hoping to get that sited this week, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Ross.
Thank you.
City Managers Report, Dan.
I have just a few things. Um, just so you know, I got an email from Megan Jones. I guess, uh, IDEA, uh, Director Debbie Durham's gonna be in town on Friday, July fifteenth for a meeting. They would like to meet at lunch, uh, with, uh, some city representatives to talk about some of the progress we're making and some of the future things we've got coming up. I won't be in town that day, I'm gonna be out of town for a conference, but, uh, the mayor will step in. And if anybody else would like to, we can, we can set that up. It's around lunchtime. Um, also, towards the end of September, the Iowa League of Cities Conference that, uh, is being held in, uh, Waterloo. Anyway, that wants to get some, uh, city education and some good networking with other city officials. That'd be a good opportunity to do that. Um, you can see somebody here and we can get you set up with that. I also wanna, uh, thank the team. We've had a couple of, uh, what you might call wicked problems where you don't have a, whi- which, uh, which, any answer's not a good answer. And we've got some, I'm very, uh, happy to say that several team members have stepped up with some really good ideas that have really moved this process along. So, without getting into too much detail, I just wanna thank the team. Um, I, sounds, there's some very smart people on the team and, um, it's working very well.
Okay, any questions for Dan? Okay, under the Mayor's Report, uh, just really one thing, but before I go into it, uh, I'd like to reiterate with regard to the Iowa League of Cities Meeting coming up in September. Uh, I've been to several of those, uh, during my years on the council. Found them ve- very beneficial. I think Ron's been to several as well. And, uh, would encourage anyone who can go, uh, to go to that Iowa League of Cities Meeting in Waterloo in late September. So, uh, the only thing I have on, on my report is the Fourth of July. And the Fourth of July, obviously, we celebrated our country's independence yesterday. And it was somewhat muted by the shooting in Highland Park, Illinois. And I know that that struck very close to home with, uh, City Manager, uh, Dan Gifford, uh, having relatives in the area and attending the parade. I hope I'm not speaking out of turn.
No.
With regard to that. But it was a good celebration here in Spencer. And I think, uh, we can't lose sight of the fact that, uh, we do celebrate our country's independence, uh, once a year. And I have just a, a little historical trivia. Now, that may sound unusual for you, coming from a history teacher, former history teacher. But we've had three presidents who died on the Fourth of July. I don't know if anybody knew that or not. Uh, James Monroe, uh, John Adams, and Thomas Jefferson. Thomas Jefferson and John Adams both died on July fourth on the fiftieth anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. Kind of eerie, kind of eerie. And on his deathbed, John Adams is reported to have said, "But Jefferson survives." He was wrong. Jefferson had died five hours previously. Uh, and, uh, it, it's just amazing to me that, that that happened. I'm not sure if it was a coincidence, happenstance, I don't know what it was, but i- it's pretty amazing. And the other thing that I wanna mention about that is that John Adams and Thomas Jefferson were both on the committee to write the Declaration of Independence. Thomas Jefferson, of course, wrote most of it. John Adams, Ben Franklin, and a couple of others, Robert Livingston, were there to kind of edit Jefferson's declaration. But the thing of it is, Adams and Jefferson started out as colleagues and worked very closely together throughout the Revolutionary War. But after the Constitution, they both kind of went their separate ways and became very bitter political rivals. But they were never enemies, they were rivals. And after Jefferson's presidency in eighteen, ended in eighteen oh eight, Adams and Jefferson became fast friends and wanted to move the country forward in the same direction. And I think it's just a lesson that a lot of us can take to heart, hopefully, in moving our city forward, our state forward, and our country forward. And that's all I have for the Mayor's Report. Okay, Council and Committee Reports, Dan.
Um, upcoming meetings, of course, a regular city council meeting on July eighteenth at six-thirty. That'll be back on Monday night like usual. Um, we've got a, an exciting committee, the whole meeting, where we're gonna tour the wastewater treatment plan in the landfill, which will be exciting for all. And we have a finance committee we need to schedule for the e- end of the fiscal year transfers.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Put it in red letters. Okay. Item twelve, a motion to approve the bills and claims.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brian. Second by Tom. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, motion carries. Item thirteen, other business and opportunity to address the council. I think we have someone in the audience who'd like to address the council.
Hi, y'all.
And, uh, would you please, and you might want to, uh, bend the mic down?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, that's, that's why it's adjustable. And just for the record, please state your name.
Margaret George, and I live at three seventeen West Eighteenth Street, lot twenty-five, in Bill Kasky's Trailer Court. I'm a spokesperson here for the trailer court, 'cause some of them can't get out to do, you know, what we need to do there at the trailer court. Well, on the twenty-first of this month, you guys, or last month, you guys gave us a, a letter, or Alex did, stating that we have, you know, fourteen days to move. And fourteen days, you can't get that. I mean, we tried. Um, we cleaned it up as hard as we can. Um, we, out of pocket, we paid for stuff, you know, like the dumpsters and, uh, removal of the, uh, the appliances and stuff like that. And then Bill's tearing down stuff, repairing stuff. And, um, then today, we got another thing from Alex stating we have until Tuesday of next week. Again, we do not have enough time to move out. We like to stay where, where we are now, 'cause we can't afford nothing else. A lot of people there is on a fixed-to-fixed income, a paycheck-to-paycheck, and we cannot afford another house. I've searched, uh, what Alex gave me, and there's nothing. The market is so high that I can't afford it, or anybody there in the trailer court can't afford it. There's nothing. Uh, I have pets, they have pets. Again, there's a ninety-year-old woman there on oxygen twenty-four-seven. She can't be removed from her home. You guys can't shut off the electric there. You guys will be killing her. And then there's another gentleman there, he's been there for twenty-some years. And he still has to have his AC to breathe, 'cause he's total emphysema. And he can't deal with the heat like any other person can, young person. Um, I am, uh, disabled, I have a heart condition. I'm not supposed to be out in the heat, but this past week, I have been out there. I've been out there cleaning, just, it's hard, it's to save our trailer court and where we live. So, all we're asking is some time, some more time than Tuesday of next week. It's, it'll take, you know, 'cause I called those numbers for help for housing. It takes more than thirty days to get on there, you know, to get help. So, you know, again, you know, with the elderly there, I'm a heart patient. Um, and we just need more time to find the right housing there, right here. You guys do not have that here. The lowest rent that we found was seven-fifty. It's out of my budget. I can't afford that for my family. And I know that most of the other families there, they can't afford that either. It's pay-to-pay check, the bills is going up, their, um, food prices has gone up. I mean, we know what's out there. I mean, it, it's really hard for us. And Bill Kasky has given us the chance to live in our homes that we have there. And he's doing everything he can to try to keep, and some families have moved out because of the scare. And there's families there that is willing to fight every step of the way. So, that's what we're, you know, what we're doing now, is trying to get that time. And to, um, to fix the problems that we need to fix, for Bill to fix that problem. And, you know, we're not in a way, you know, there's times that his friends would, or his colleagues would come out and take pictures. I'm afraid that, you know, to me, as their children out there, you know, I don't want anybody taking pictures of my, my place with my kids being out there. But my boy is a little older, so, but there's babies out there, you know. And we're, all we're doing is trying to buy some time, either to figure out a new place to live or to help Bill get the, you know, to get the, um, the electric upgraded, whatever it needs to be taken to do it. So, you know, if you have any questions, I'm open to suggestions. I, I tried everything else. I tried to call, like tonight, I received a, a call for a housing and he said he doesn't have nothing. It's right before I came here, so, there is nothing out there. So, if you guys gotta address something, would you please address something, like, some kind of program for this ki- like this kind of situation? Because there's really nothing out there for us. Again, we'll be out of streets, in our tents, you know, wherever, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Wherever, you know, wherever, you know. You know, some people don't have that option.
Right. Well, I thank you for your time. I know it's tough for you guys to, it's a tough situation out there and stuff. I've got a question for Don. How, how did this process start? And what, what are our rules and regulations on, on, um, on these kind of properties? How, I mean, could you give me a history on that?
I can, Alec can probably fill in better than I can. But we, we have provisions in our, um, code about substandard housing. Basically, a floor, if you will, of minimum requirements in, in terms of utilities and sanitation and health. And, it, it wasn't certainly a case of targeting this particular facility. But in the normal- that there was a very dangerous electrical line essentially on the ground or three feet above the ground that was apparently providing a temporary service. And when that came to the building department's attention, they had to respond to that, and in the process of investigating, they observed, well, all the other things that they presented in their report that you all have received with the photographs. That's how we got to where we are.
Since then, the problem has been fixed.
Right.
And rectified. And we also have pictures, which Alex had and didn't present them there, too. We have took pictures, you know? Some of those places that he, they took, Bill doesn't own. Somebody else does. It's not Bill's problem if somebody else owns the trailer, you know, the trailer. That's not his problem, that's their problem.
And that's another question I got for you, Don. You know, we can shut it down, but there are personal properties out there that pay lot rents. And I think, you know, I've kind of talked to Anna and Alec a little bit, you know? I see a problem where we're going to have a real tough time kicking people out that have absolutely nowhere else to go. I mean, even if we shut off the power and we shut off the electricity and everything, you know, and I agree, Anna says, "Well, that'll be up to the landlord and we'll find him for..." Well, if the city doesn't have the courage or the strength to evict those people, how can you leave that on the landlord that has to go through the court system? I get a real tough time with the city not, you know, if that comes up here, you know, I'll have a real tough time, you know, kicking people out of their place. But, you know, it seemed like an awful short time, it seemed like to rectify this problem. I see it was an emergency and everything, and it needed to be addressed. And I did talk to Mr. Kaski, and he had a licensed electrician out there, okay? And that licensed electrician put up, and I know it wasn't up to standard, you know, I, obviously, you know, but Alec, you know, when that was corrected, then they started finding other things. But the utilities put a new transformer out there, and they hooked all those lines up about two years ago. So, what changes the category when the utilities hooked those, all those things up with the way they were? I get it, there was one that was laying on the ground, but they, those other lines were not, you know, they were hooked up by the utilities. If, you know, if that was such a dangerous situation, why did not the utilities, you know? And I hate to get on our city staff, but if we have licensed electricians going out there and saying it's safe and it's, you know, up to the standards, you know, Alec, you can inspect it, but now you want him to scope all the sewers and stuff? And I don't know, I know some, Mark White went out there and inspected, and I believe the sewers are working now, but now you want him to go through and get all these inspections and stuff at a cost that is prohibitive of the thing? You know, I've taken a lot of effort, and I know sewers, Mark White knows sewers. If the mains are open and the water's running, I believe the sewers are working, you know? If you run a hose for 15 minutes down the drain and it doesn't go anywhere but the sewer, you know, it went down the sewer, you know? I get it, Alec, that you feel sorry for these people, but I mean, you listen to this lady, and you've got people out there that may not be able to, you know, they're not going to move a 90-year-old lady, you know, and she passes away because you shut the power off, and in that meantime, you know, I get it, I get it, but you're going to put a hardship on some of these people, and, you know, maybe I'm preaching to the choir, but, you know, I've done a lot of electrical and, I'm not electrician, but I look at some of the things, the lines up there. If SMU really felt, you know, if they came here and said, "It's absolutely so dangerous", why did they hook them up? You know, they put a brand-new transformer out there, why did they hook them up? You know? And why do we have electricians out there putting up temporaries claiming that they're safe? And then you say, "Well, now they have to put in all new lines and everything"? If we have an electrician that goes out there and certifies that they're up to standard, I mean, Alec, I mean, what inspection have you done out there? I mean, you could step up here and explain what inspection that you've done out there on the electrical side to deem it dangerous out there if we've got electricians that are telling us that it's okay?
Did you call SMU and ask them?
Thanks, Margaret. Thank you.
I got home at 1:30 last night, and I, this stuff came on my lap, and so I, that's what I, you know, I've talked to Alec here right before I left, and then I talked to Anna this afternoon.
Before Alec responds, I'd like to just make a few comments with regard to this situation. And Ron and I have talked about it. I have been in contact with Margaret. She and I have had several conversations over the past few days, and we have a cordial relationship, I would say. Very civil, very civil. And certainly, the city understands the financial predicament that folks are in. We get that. But we also understand that there were safety violations that were ascribed by city staff. We also understand that. And our first concern, now, you may have a disagreement about that, but our first concern as the city of Spencer is the safety of our citizens. And we do not want to put any of our citizens in a dangerous situation. So, we did have the two-week notice, correct, okay? Over the weekend, in looking at this, obviously, today was the day for the two-week notice. We looked at that, obviously, the Fourth of July holiday fell on a weekend, so there was nothing that anybody could do, so that you really lost out there three days, okay? So, and then with this heat advisory that was coming into play today and maybe into tomorrow, we convened a meeting today at City Hall this morning among city staff and myself and Mayor Pro Tim Orison. And basically, what we wanted to talk about was whether or not it would be prudent to look at an extension. And there was a lot of back and forth with regard to that particular topic, with regard to that extension, okay? And basically, what we wanted to do, we wanted to make sure, and to Ron's point, no, we do not want anybody to be hurt by this situation in any way, shape, or form. And so, what we decided that we needed to do before we could do anything else was we needed to have an inventory of what folks out in the trailer court had made alternate housing plans at this point. And so, some city staff went out to find out. We also thought that we needed to have a meeting of the agencies that could work with folks finding appropriate housing. And that would be the Community Housing Initiative, Upper Des Moines, Elder Bridge, let's see, we have the Ministerial Association. We all met this afternoon. We also, and people, those folks are very willing and able to help people find alternate housing. Now, what we also are going to do, starting tomorrow and going through Saturday morning, is the Clay County Emergency Management has a trailer, and the fire department has a trailer that we can set up across the street from the trailer court in the fairgrounds lot. They're air-conditioned, and folks from CHI, Upper Des Moines, Elder Bridge, Seasons, those folks that can help people will be there for those three days. And you can go and talk to them, you can find out where you can get help, where you can get housing. They will do everything that they can to get people alternate housing until the safety violations are corrected. So, I want you to know that the city is doing all that we can to promote the health and safety of our residents. We're trying to take into account the fact, too, that there are financial constraints with some of the folks that we're dealing with as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Alec.
Yes, good evening. And not to discount all of the cleanup that the residents have done out there, it has been a lot of work and a lot of time that they have put into this. Onto the inspection question. The state recognizes our jurisdiction over the residential sections of electrical inspection. Anna is licensed to do that. Our interpretation of that code, the local code and the electrical state code, is what is put in place for this. The overhead lines, as we continued through the inspection of the property, we had the conversation with the electrician there and the landlord. The cord itself was deemed insufficient for the load that it was carrying, meaning the demand for the power coming through that cord is insufficient and ultimately led to what was known as a ground out at the transformer. Luckily, a ground out at the transformer and not back fit to those meters. In the event it would have gone to those meters, we would have seen catastrophic failure of the electrical system. Noting that system there in place, walking through the trailer park with SMU, we discussed what type of system needs to be put in place, and that's the type of system that was put into the letter. At this point, the electrician has been noticed of that, Bill Kaski has been noticed of that, and we're waiting on to hear a plan from them on the design of this electrical system. This electrical system is not something that will happen overnight, but it is the immediate threat out there to the health and safety of our residents here in Spencer. The septic and sewer, not septic, sewer issues, there is no septic out there. It's all sewer that leads out to the main connection there. The inspection that had been taking place at the main for the northern column, there was a break or blockage of that sort, causing blockage to fill up throughout the, we believe, to backfeed up through the sewage systems and come out through underneath the trailers. At first, it started at the closest trailers as it came out through any opening that it could, and then continued on. There was evidence of an older pile, and then further to the east is a more active Given that evidence, we would assume that the blockage came up and through openings that are there, whether those were breaks or openings underneath the trailers, we don't know. That's why we need to have it scoped and inspected to understand what's broken and if it has been indeed fixed.
But my question is on the sewers. My understanding is the mains are working on there, but each trailer should be inspected individually by itself? Because once the main is clear, as long as the main's clear, it's taking the sewer there, correct?
The sewage, yes, will go down a toilet, hopefully, into the main and go on and out. If you leave a sewer and a main, eventually, most of that stuff will dry up and get out of there eventually, the way it should. Whether it's going to be left and unused, or, like you said, run a hose down it for 14 minutes and see if it comes back up, that's why we have it scoped.
It's not the perfect situation out there, but this just didn't happen overnight. And, you know, the inspection on, you know, SMU...
SMU, I would love to, would I love to have them here. I mean, to me, they're, I mean, basically, if they're saying that it was underutilized on the service, they put in a meter box or a sub-meter there, it's only a couple of years ago. Why would they hook those babies up if they felt that it was so unsafe? Usually, you know, I know most of the time, anything coming up to the service line or where, up to the power outlets, SMU has inspected or has to have a licensed electrician install those, and once they've had those installed and inspected, you know, the service is, you know, from there on is a responsibility of the things. I just saw that it was such a quick turnaround, you know? I get it, it was dangerous, but only given them, what was it, 10, 12 days or 14 days? Just seemed, 14 days, just seemed to me like it was just a little bit extreme on our part not to work with them a little bit more. I'd like to see a giving them 30 days, you know? And then I read some of the situations there on some of the codes, and maybe you can help me on this. The code out there on the trailer, they're a non-conforming entity out there, correct?
The trailer park itself sits in a...
Is a non-conforming usage.
Sits in a commercial zone. It's not, doesn't...
So, what happens after 90 days after you close it?
So, normally, in a case of non-conformity, 90 days of the non-use, it goes back to a conforming use and to get...
So, basically, you say, if he can't get it fixed and get somebody living there within 90 days, he can no longer ever have a trailer park there. It goes to commercial unless he goes to a variance and goes through a lot of...
Through board adjustment, yeah.
Yep.
I have nothing against the trailer park being there.
Right.
If someone were to come to the city and say, "Hey, I want to put the trailer park back, I've done all this work and all this painstaking, expensive work on the trailer park," I see no reason as to stop them from doing so.
So, have we give them specifics? Bottom line, this is exactly what needs to be done.
I have outlined into the best of my ability in that letter, I spoke extensively with Mr. Kaski.
So, to the best of your ability, but it sounded, I mean, some of the things, I sounded very vague. I mean, it's like, you need to fix this pole, this wire. I mean, to me, you need to give specifics as a building director and inspector. We should say, "This wire from this pole is not adequate for what you guys are doing." I mean, I'm not here to bust you, but I've got constituents out there that respect me to have to do these hard questions to you guys. I mean...
Do not worry in the slightest.
You know, I mean, I have, you know, I still have a problem, you know? If I've got an electrician, let's get up three or four electricians out there, and let's see what the best answer is. Why are we, as city staff, which are not electricians, telling electricians what, how they have to do it? Why aren't we, if we've got, if we're going so much trying to get places for these people to live, why can't we bring in three or four electricians and the city, or SMU, and make a statement and talk to them and see how we make it safe and to the, how we can do that and see if there's, you know, ways that we can get, move this along and make it a safe place out there? I understand it, it's not pretty. I mean, I'm not advocating that it's the nicest, but I, you know, I think this woke up the people there about cleaning up their neighborhood and trying to help.
Can we, can we back this up just a little bit here?
We sure can.
Let's go way back to who the responsibility initially falls on with this whole mess out there.
Right. I know where it ends up.
You're busting his butt over this.
No, I'm just asking.
But let's go back to who really hasn't done a thing out there for how long?
One of the things I think we have to keep in mind is the people who reside there. This is no fault of their own. They have done nothing wrong to, you know, in this situation. So, the city has a responsibility to look out for the safety and the welfare of the residents. And, you know, Ron, I think your questions are well-taken and, you know, and probably are okay to ask. There's nothing wrong with that, and Alec is doing a great job, you know, standing in the fire, but...
Residential safety of the city of Spencer is our bottom line. And you agree, you are on board, you, I completely understand that.
And that's why I'm saying, but how, as a city, can we help them? If we can bring in some specialty people, electricians and stuff, that say, "This is exactly what we have to do." You know, it's pretty hard to fix something when you say, "Well, this maybe needs to upgrade it and this and..." But if we could get people out there with some expertise to say, "Hey, you need four hotwire coming from that pole to this pole, give me..."
You know, it's pretty hard to fix something when you say, "Well, this maybe needs to upgrade it and this and" but, but if we could get people out there with some expertise to say, "Hey, you need four hot wires coming from that pole to this pole. Give me specifics and then it's gonna"
We've explained that the meter bank system underground is what we're expecting from this design from the electrician.
But I, I get that you want it underground, but, but by, why does it have to be on? It's been overhead since, since they built the thing there. Let's, let's put it back to the standards of where it was, you know?
Well, it has to be at the standards that meet city code.
Well, overhead covers city code.
There, there are Yep, overhead does, it works for city code. However, um, it comes down to the protection of those utilities, the access of those utilities and the use that SMU is able to provide there. Um, the meter bank system will give them access and control over that instead of an overhead line moving throughout the trailer park in a state that currently is insufficient for the load that's out there. But also avoid future splicing that may or may not be happening.
Right.
Margaret, is, is that right? No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Margaret, just to be clear, ma'am, so that you're aware, it's not Alec.
I, I get, I get where you guys is coming from.
Yes, ma'am, just to be, the seven council members. Councilman Hanson being one. We are the ones who tasked Alec with this responsibility when we voted at the last meeting. We, the seven, are responsible for the action as we have been your elected officials to make these difficult decisions. Whether you vote or not, we're here to represent you. To that point, I have certainly heard your concerns. I, I believe you've been in communication with, with our city manager and with our mayor. I ask that you continue to work with them and Alec. And we, as your elected representatives, will continue to try to work with you to the best of our ability while maintaining, and I, the number one goal that we have here, and Alec and the mayor have hit it directly on the head. We have a responsibility to you and everyone in our community to be safe. However, we have a responsibility to work with you, and I believe that we are attempting to do that to the best of our ability. But my main point, just to be clear, is it is us seven who made the decision. So, your concerns, your frustrations, we seven are the ones who hold that responsible. And I'm happy to listen to you, you know, now or offline, but your frustrations and concerns ultimately are with us. The individuals who you're dealing with on the face, on the daily, they're the representatives of us. So, I take responsibility for what's taking place, and I did that based on the information presented.
Okay, let me ask you guys something. Have you guys ever been homeless? Have you guys ever slept in your car? Have you guys ever begged for food? It's hard. It's really, really friggin' hard. And you're putting people out there? You say you guys got help, 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 but when you guys really are out there facing day-to-day, people spitting at you, friggin' yelling at you, "Get off the street." You can't, you know, you're a bum, you're retarded, you're stupid, whatever. It is hard. And when you put your family in jeopardy like that every day, I have. And it is real. People do throw dirt on you, spit on you, call you every name in the book. It is real. And you're putting thirty-six families into that world? You guys are wrong, wrong. You guys are really wrong.
Margaret, thank you for your comments and, and your passion with regard to this. And, and I know you speak for a lot of the residents out there. And, uh, you know, I'm sure we're going to be in contact in the very near future. So, I really thank you for your comments.
Yeah, I hope you guys really think about this, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to add one thing. I have one of the residents from the trailer park that's now renting an apartment from me. And, um, he enlisted or asked for the help from Upper Des Moines. And Upper Des Moines was, I mean, they were wonderful. All she did was turn on a few faucets and look at my apartment, and she was fine with it. And, um, he's getting three and a half months of assistance. So, I, I really hope that you guys find something, uh, helpful out of all those agencies that are coming for the next three days. And I encourage you, encourage you to sit down and visit with them. You know, um, we've kind of kicked the can around here on, you know, closing it down and stuff like that. I'm not gonna go on with that anymore, but, uh, just to move forward, please enlist their help and see if you can get, make some progress with them.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom.
I called them.
Any, okay, one last comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have called them. Thirty days.
Margaret, I, I, I would, I would, I would act on what
I, I, I get where you guys are saying.
Councilman Nelson just said, I would, I would go and, and talk to them tomorrow. Um, I think the information that we received at the meeting this afternoon would indicate that they can move quicker than that, so.
They did today.
Yeah, so.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Me.
A motion made by Donovan. Second by Stracey. I guess, I guess. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favors, please signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. May adjourn.